Hey, five o'clock. I'd like to call and join the meeting on the Bethel selection and the and the uh, project we need to go. I'll turn it over to Sharon and let her monitor it.
Thank you. So you all have a packet like this tonight in front of you. It's all been hole punch so you can filter it in your binders where it belongs. So I'll go through the packet. What I've done is I've made some changes from what we went over last week that had to be added in or changed. And this is your summary sheet which shows you the, the amount for the fiscal year 2025 budget. It shows you the dollar amount of increase or decrease and the percentage of the increase or decrease, and it shows the total appropriation that would have to be raised at town meeting to approve these particular budgets. Below that, it shows the Oxford County taxes and the MSAD 44 budgets. However, those do not need to go on a warrant because they're not approved, pre-approved by the voters. The county tax, we do have that amount, but we do not have the school budget yet. Managers from the school district area are meeting with Mark Kenny, the superintendent, on Thursday to get our numbers for the appropriations for the school district. So we'll start right off with the first attachment, and that is for the general administration budget. This budget kind of ended up, I did this last because it ends up being a catch-all for budgets, amounts that I took out of other budgets that should not have been in those budgets, and they've been moved to this budget. And also, some of the items that were in the administration budget have been taken out and put in the appropriate budgets. So um, with the personnel budget, with the administration budget, some of the items that were budgeted in here belonged in the rescue budget, and they belonged in the fire department budget. Those amounts have been moved there. They're to do with internet and/or telephone. And right now, what I'm doing is working on all of the internet and telephone accounts that the town has because after going through everything here, I realize that we're paying an extraordinary amount for all of these coverages, and they all need to be looked at because I believe some of them are probably duplicated and we don't need them. And um, so I'm guessing next week I will have the information that I'm hoping will reduce all of these lines in all of the budgets. If you'll notice in the administration budget, there were two large lines that were budgeted for contract services and maintenance contracts with no explanation what was coming out of either those. One line was 20,000, the other was 27,000. So if you notice on the first page, what I've done is made notes to show that the lines following have all been broken up and itemized as to what those contract and/or maintenance agreement lines are, showing what was budgeted last year if they were by themselves, and the amount that is needed for those particular items. When you look at the third page, we were budgeting, there are two lines here. One is for property taxes to the town of Newry, for the Bingham Forest land. We're not putting an amount in there to budget this year, and we don't need to budget that amount. Last, current year, we were budgeting $12,800 to pay both tax bills to Newry. However, the only tax bill that we need to budget for is the, the tax bill that used to be the former Sledge Field here, and you'll see a line of $700 for this year. The other line for the Bingham taxes, that does not come out of the town's account, doesn't need to be budgeted because that money comes from the Bingham Forest account, so it doesn't need to be budgeted, so I've taken it completely out of here. The Bingham Forest does logging, all of the proceeds from their logging. There are documents to, to prove and to show legally that be paid to their organization, and these property taxes come out of the logging funds, so that's where that money needs to come out of, not from our budget. Also, I've taken out the airport tax reimbursement. We got property taxes for four hangars at the airport. That is property tax that goes to the town and comes in that way, and it doesn't go back to the airport, so I have zero, that line out also. I've made, done the explanations under the telephone and internet to show what we pay. And let's see. So those are the major things in the administration budget. What I've done with the, the administration budget covers the salary for the town manager, and will also, and also for the select board members, and the SAT-17 board directors, and the moderators. And so I've done, the way I've done the managers' budget is in six months increments. I'm probably going to be around until the end of December. And then after the June town meeting, then we'll see if we can get some ads in the paper, and I'll help you find a new town manager. I, I was retired. But that's where I am right now. So I did it in six months increments. So it's, it's broken up that way. So the amount that's in the budget for the manager will cover whether I'm here or whether a new manager is hired at what you should pay that new manager, who should be an experienced manager. Any questions in the administration? You can always go back if you do. The next department is the town clerk. I had to make some adjustments for this because of the elections coming up. We do have to rent a second tabulating machine. It's a DS 200 voting machine. We have one, but we need two because of the November 2024 election, and we need to rent an additional four memory sticks, so that's going to be an additional charge. You'll see that charge has gone up in the DS 200 line to $3,500 from what it was before. And all of these department ones, you'll see that I updated the date up in the corner of 3/25, so you can replace this sheet with the sheet that was in your binder that probably shows 3/17. So I believe that was the only change that I had to make in here was to add those for the, the voting that we have to rent different, more equipment for. The next budget is the assessor's office. That one I did not have to make any changes to. It should be the same as what we looked at last week. The next is the finance office. That also, I'm sorry.
You're not going to have an assessing, assisting? Courtney is not going to do that anymore?
Courtney is the code enforcement officer now. She was hired to be the code enforcement officer. So the assessing assistant and the CEO assistant that she did previously, those duties have been rolled into a full-time job with other duties added to that. And that budget is in the finance department budget. And we'll, we'll do that one next. Well, actually, that's where we were. So in the finance office, you will see that is the finance officer position and the finance assistant. That's the full-time position that will cover those two part-time jobs that Courtney did before, and it will also include payroll, HR, and sewer billing that we are going to now take back and start billing again here, rather than having main rural water due after experiencing many problems. And there were no other changes to that budget. The next one is the planning and CDO office. That's where you will see the code enforcement, local plumbing inspector, wage. And there were no changes. I did take out the contract services last week. I said I didn't know what that was for. Can't find out what it's for, so it came out. So that was reduced by $500. And you'll see on the bottom of all of these where it shows wages and social security and Medicare. So that's, so I can calculate that information on another budget. The next department is protection enforcement, and that covers the animal control officer and the Oxford County Patrol Services. And I think I had that sheet put in. Yes, is it in here? Okay, so there is another attachment that goes with this, but where did we put it? Jessica, where'd you go? I think we put it further down in the book, but what it will show is the, last week when we met, the county had given us a budget of 600, in excess of $600,000 for the Oxford County coverage that we have here. And that afternoon of our budget meeting, they sent a, a correction. So now, the Oxford County Patrol budget is $584,585. So they reduced it by about $15,000. And you'll, you'll see in your packet, you gotta, where did I, where did we put it?
It's the third from the last.
Okay. Okay, so, and we did go, Frank and I went to a meeting at the county commissioner's office last Tuesday. It was almost an hour and a half meeting to talk about this, and they're supposed to get back to us because we asked for a reduced price, and we brought several things to their attention with their bill that just did not equal out. And I did send them an email this morning, and I've asked to have a adjusted bill to show no coverage from midnight to 6:00 AM, to show what that would look like with three dedicated deputies rather than four, because that budget they gave us, they have two dedicated office deputies for us, but they do not have the other two. They're listed as vacant because they're short-staffed. So we haven't heard back from them on all of the questions that we had. I did hear from Alicia this afternoon, who is the town manager over in Dixfield, and she did get an email. They've reduced the administrative costs by 2%. So if they gave us a 2%, that would be a big $560 decrease on the administrative costs. That was over $28,000. So we're just waiting to hear back from them. The next budget is the fire protection. So you will see in this one, I don't think I included it last week, but it's under the telephone and internet, spectrum internet of $1,200. That was never budgeted in fire before because it was budgeted in the administration account, and it is the internet for the fire department, and so it's here where it belongs. So if I didn't put that in, you're just seeing that for the first time, Mike.
Sharon?
Yes.
Wouldn't it work if it would be more cost-effective if we did everything from the same company?
For what?
For internet services.
That's what I'm looking at right now, because after I found out, we were paying close to $20,000 a year for internet and phone and fax coverage. Yes. And that's not the only thing. So, but I don't have those today for you. That's, those are some of the costs that I'm hoping that we can have next week, so that will adjust, but I have to budget it the way it is right now because I don't know what a change would be. But yes, it would be, and that's what we're looking at.
Just for the record, the fire chief had nothing to do with who provides it or how it was budgeted?
I, I understand that totally. So let's see, what else? If there was anything in here that I had to make changes? One thing that you will see in all the budgets where the water is, and this one, of course, has the hydrants in it, which is why the fire department budget is, has such a large increase. So originally, we received, I received a call from Scott Frazier telling me that the water increase was going to be 53% this year. So Friday, he called to tell me that they have petition PUD with the new change, and they're looking for 25% for the next two years each year. So I've adjusted all of the water lines in here, and I hope I caught them all, to 25% increase versus 53% increase. So that decreases the hydrants. Still over 50, $50,000 increase just for the hydrants. Let's see. I think that's it that I had to make for changes in the fire department. So their budget would have gone down a little bit from what it was last week. And then on page two of the fire department budget, I included what all the individual stipend amounts, cost of letted, unleaded and diesel, and personnel expenses comparisons, and also their payroll comparisons for four years. The next budget is the ambulance service. That has three pages. So I adjusted that one. You have three columns, one yellow, green, and blue or gray, whatever it looks like to you. And the yellow is based on a 3.2% increase for all departments. The blue, the green is what we talked about last week, that is Dave's proposal, adding a chief as a full, full-time chief. The cost of the, the payrolls differ than a 3.2, and those are to bring them up with the recommended amount that Dave has recommended. And if you look at that, page three, you'll see on the bottom section, there are drivers, EMT, advanced EMT, and paramedic. It will show what they're currently making and what Dave's recommendation is to increase them, and that's based on an average to keep them comparable to other ambulance services that we work with in our area. There's also, the, the middle spreadsheet shows the call volumes from 2017 through 2022. And then the top one shows you the current staff. We have five explorers, two juniors, 14 EMTs, three advanced EMTs, and 10 paramedics. And the green column reflects all of the increases to bring those wages average. It does include a cost to add a full-time chief for $65,000. And then if you look at the bottom of page two, I've also put in a chart to show what the additional costs are for a full-time position that would not be budgeted in this actual budget because they are in the, in the budget that shows the employee benefits. The third column, the blue or gray, that is adding a nighttime per diem shift with no chief, just leaving it as a ambulance director. You'll see, and then the other thing too, on the yellow column, I did make the adjustment to add the $14,740 in the personnel expense line that was missing from last week. So we're looking at the total of the yellow column of 425,753. The increase adding a full-time chief would be 57,242, adding a per diem nighttime with no chief, just leaving the director's position the way it is. That actually has a $106,000 increase. So what is the difference between a stipend position and a paid position? So if, you can pay someone a stipend if the hourly wage for the hours they work does not, I have to say this right, does not bring the minimum wage, the wage they would make with that stipend below a minimum wage. And the hours that Dave puts in on the stipend position, he would be lucky if he made $5 an hour. So I did check with legal again this past week just to make sure that how I've been doing this in the past is accurate, and you can't pay someone a stipend if their hourly wage for what they do as a stipend does not at least meet minimum wage, and this one does not. So that's something to think about also.
Okay, so what are we doing about?
What's that?
What, what's, what's the ramifications of that?
I think if you look at this sheet, it tells you that.
Is that the blue column?
No, it's, it's the green column. It's adding a full-time chief. I don't think there was, well, yes, there is. So the other thing that's reflective in here also is the, the telephone and internet. Same situation as with Mike. I've added the $1,200 into the rescue budget that's been charged in the administration budget for the internet that is used for rescue, and it, and it is not administration budget, which was one reason why the administration budget was extremely high with internet and phone charges. The other thing is propane, and that is... Where did I put that? Did I put that? No, I didn't put it there. You know what? It's, it's in the other, it's in the rescue building budget for rescue, so it's not on this particular one here. You'll also see under legal, I think I touched bases on that last week too. I took legal out of here, and that's a major change too on the administration budget that I just blew right by. So when you go back and you look at the administration budget, you're going to see that, that line is $25,000 for this year, up from $10,000. The reason for that is, in this, in all of the town budgets, there was $10,000 budgeted in the administration account, $6,000 in the planning account, $4,000 in the treatment plant, $3,300 in the airport, and $1,500 in the airport, I mean, excuse me, in the ambulance. So you can't track legal expenses if you have a, an amount of money budgeted in all their budgets. Legal expense is an expense for the town. It needs to be together. So that's why you see such a large increase in the administration budget is because legal expense has been taken out of all of these other budgets. It has been put in, and it's all been added in here. The same thing goes for the auditing. The auditing has been spread out over different departments. That's all now in the administration budget, and you'll see that that's a $15,000 cost for that. That's on the top of page two. So when you look at what was budgeted this year, you'll see $5,000, and then you'll probably gasp when you see, oh, gosh, it's gone up $10,000. Well, well, it hasn't because in the airport budget, $2,500 was budgeted, and the sewer plant, $3,000 was budgeted. There's no way to take a breakdown of what it costs to be, to budget those departments. You need to, it's one. Yodder, it gives you one price for the town, and it's budgeted with administration. So that's, I totally overlooked that when I was doing the, that one. So then the next budget we will go to is, and your packet shows the, oh, we're back on ambulance here. So what, if you have any questions on ambulance, we can, you know, we can go back on that too, but I think I've covered everything in there. The next budget is solid waste and recycling. So that one again, telephone is the same thing. I'm looking at that with the rest of them, and I did have to add, what I added in this, I also took out of the administration budget. When you go to the transfer station and you have to pay for disposals, there's a credit card system there, so the fees, we have to pay fees for that credit card system, and it depends on what credit card you use, and those fees can be anywheres between 2.5% and 6% depending on the credit card. That is a cost that we, the town, have to pay for. That has been budgeted in the administration department. It should not be. It should be budgeted in the solid waste budget right here, and it needs to be split with Newry and Hanover, and it never has because it's an expense shared with all three towns, and I will be addressing that so that it's fair that the other two towns pay a cost of the credit card fees that we have been paying right along by ourselves.
Credit card that you have to?
Yes. And it depends, like here at the town office, we have a credit card. You can use a credit card or a debit card. That charge is paid 2.5%, but the user pays that when they do their purchase. The way this one is, it's paid by the town, not the user, and it depends on the credit card. Same system as at the airport for the, when someone buys the fuel at the airport. Depends what the credit card is. So I'm going, I'm going to be checking on that too.
Yeah, because shouldn't it be the credit card user that pays that fee?
Yes. And it's the, it's the, the company that you go through that determines that. So I need to look at a different system that could be put at the transfer station so that the town doesn't pay fees, and that fee actually is close to $2,000 a year. That was budgeted at $1,000 in the administration budget this year, which is going to be over, overdrawn because we're almost at that amount now, so it's closer to $2,000. The, let's see. No, well, it, it wasn't identified in here, but it was, we did have it last year. So I've added it here so you can see it, so you know what it, it costs. There's no budget for it this year because it was just taken out of another line. So I've added Household Hazardous Waste Day. That's going to be in August this year. That's a program that is sponsored by AvCOG. They will come here. I don't know the exact date. I do know, but I can't think of it right now.
24.
What is it?
Saturday, the 24.
Saturday, the 24. Thank you, Scott. So we've already... So, we've already made arrangements and scheduled all of that, and that will cost us ten thousand dollars for that. That's a very productive, um, program that, that they have. I'm also looking at some of the tipping fees and the hauling fees. Right now, Casella charges us four hundred and seventy-five dollars a haul. So, I am going to be in contact with another company that is charging another town close by here. It's three hundred and eighty dollars a haul, so that's a big difference. So, I'm going to see what I can do with this other company as it applies to our contract. I budgeted all gas and diesel. We have a gas and diesel tank, as I explained last week, at the highway garage. Even, it runs a little bit lower than three, but for the purpose of budgeting, I put three dollars in here because we really don't know what we're going to pay next year. The next department is public works, and with the telephone, it's the same thing with the telephone here. I did have to add that twelve hundred dollars, actually in Scott's budget for telephone, it's sixteen hundred dollars. I had to add that back in, so sorry about that. That is another charge that comes from first light. So, sixteen hundred and twenty-one dollars has been paid in the past through the administration account for, um, this is the sewer plant and the public works department are tied to the town server. That cost is sixteen hundred dollars in addition to what we pay here, uh, under the town office. So, I've taken thirty-two hundred dollars out of the administration account, and sixteen hundred is now in Scott's budget. The other sixteen will be put in the sewer department budget. But again, this is all part of, if you look at all those explanations within the telephone and internet, you'll see all the, the charges and, and why, you know, there's, there's cause for concern with what we're paying. Last week, I think when I said that we were averaging five dollars a gallon for propane, I think there were a few gasps. So, that was cause for concern to me as well, and that is the average that we're paying because we get all of our propane from Suburban. So, the next day, I called Suburban. We have four accounts with Suburban. We have propane delivered to the airport, the highway garage, the wastewater treatment plant, and the ambulance. So, I called and I wanted to know why we had four accounts, why they were not on one account, why we were paying five dollars and seventy cents a gallon and six ninety from different, from whichever location it was at, um, and not a much lower price. So, I had asked to have the director of marketing call me back. I told her I wanted all four accounts put on one account, and I wanted to see what a fixed rate contract would be for two years. I'm very familiar with doing that because I did that in Freiburg. We had Suburban propane there, and, um, I also asked for, I wanted to know if we owned the tanks, if they were above ground, below ground, the size, or if they were their tanks. So, at the highway garage, we have the highest usage. We're using just under thirty-five hundred gallons a year. They gave me the amount that for a twelve-year period of what we, we use. So, for the, uh, public works department, we're using just under thirty-five hundred gallons a year. We've been paying five dollars and seventy cents a gallon for that account this year and for prior years. It's been the same thing, and, um, so that is that one. We own that tank. That's an underground tank. It's a thousand gallon tank. The next largest tank is a thousand gallon above-ground tank. That's at the sewer district. That tank, we have approximately twelve hundred gallons a year put into that. That's Suburban's tank. The next tank is at the airport. It is, um, three hundred gallon tank. It's, uh, underground and it is also a Suburban tank. The other tank is above-ground. That is at the ambulance garage, and that's used for the generator. So, the, the woman in charge of, of that, doing that, she also told me she was going to give me a credit on the last invoice that came through that was charged at six dollars and ninety cents. She would give me a credit on that and only charge me the five seventy. Well, there's not a heck of a lot of difference, but at least I thanked her for that. She was going on vacation. She will be back in her office on April first. She will get back to me on April second or third to let me know what a fixed rate contract for two years will be, and she assured me it would be significant less, significantly less. I can tell you another town just went, just signed for a one-year contract for propane with Ed River for a dollar sixty-nine for propane. So, that's what the difference is when you go out for bids and you get fixed rate contracts. So, um, I won't have, what I have in here is what we've been paying. I won't have those new prices until April second or third, but I think it's worth waiting for to get a fixed rate contract, and I think she knows that if we have a tank that we own, we can buy that from any place we want. And so, I also contacted Community Energy last week, and I talked to the representative there, and I'm going to be, um, he called, he had someone call me today, but I didn't have time to call him back today. But I will be meeting with him to see based on our usage, because we use approximately fifty-four hundred gallons of propane a year here, and I'll see what Community Energy is willing to, to give us for pricing. So, that's another, um, area that I think we're going to be able to have some significant decreases in.
Are you, are you checking with any other companies or just those two?
Well, I called Community Energy because they're right here and they have propane. If I don't get the prices I want, then I will go to the other companies, and I don't see, we have three tanks at a Suburban. The only way I can get a lower price is if we swap out tanks. That can be costly because I've been involved in that, but the largest amount that we have delivered here is at the highway garage, and that's a thousand gallon tank, and we use about thirty-five hundred gallons a year, so I could go any place for that. And, um, I don't think the town that got the dollar sixty-nine price uses anywhere's near that amount, so I think we could probably secure a price from them. So, but it's, it's, it's getting the information to them, them getting back to you, so we'll see what I have. I don't think there were any other changes in the public works that I had to change. That budget does have a decrease. Oh, the last thing is the, is the lights. So, when I checked the next day, when we were talking about the streetlights and the cross-streetlights, that was actually being coded wrong here. So, that's why I took those numbers from the way they were coded. So, the streetlights are sixteen thousand dollars a year, and the cross-streetlights are nine hundred. I had them reversed on the explanation. So, it's the same amount of money. It's just, it was just the coding was, was wrong. The next budget is the coal block, which is the town office here. This is the water, the water is adjusted because it's in this budget for the town office. I reduced that from fifty-three to twenty-five percent. I put the description in here, Lori, that you gave me, that the planning office was formerly the police department, so that's why we have two meters here. That was the only change I had to make here. The next is the fire station. Reduce the water, um, this budget changed because of the water for fifty-three percent to twenty-five percent. I think that was the only change I had to make there. The ambulance garage building, um, they have propane there as well, and again, that's an eighty-three gallon above-ground tank. I put the size of the tanks and what we use in, in all of them, so you could refer back to that. The next department is the recreation department budget. I also included a copy of what the recreation director gave me as far as the registrations for the towns that participate in the recreation program here. Those towns are Woodstock, Greenwood, Newry, Hanover, Albany, Gilliard, and other towns in addition to Bethel. Non-registered costs and other information on that third sheet. So, again, with the recreation director, we talked last week how that was a stipend position. The job description actually is for a part-time position. So, I did change the position from a stipend position to a part-time position, and that has the same explanation as what I just explained about the rescue chief. Nate had provided me with documentation to show the number of hours he works and showing what his hourly rate would be, which was less than ten dollars an hour, um, based on the stipends. So, according to statute on what you should pay stipends for, this didn't meet the test either, so that's why it's being moved to a part-time position with an hourly rate, twenty hours, um, a week rather than a stipend. Another way to look at a stipend position too is, um, they're volunteers. So, generally, if someone is a volunteer and you want to compensate them for what they do as a volunteer, you pay them a stipend. That was the original intent of stipends years and years ago. I did hear that there was some questions about the, um, basketball program. So, last week, we talked about buying basketballs. Well, it's not four thousand dollars worth of buying basketballs. That's the cost of the entire program, and it isn't, um, so it's, it's the, it's the cost of the program, and, um, I put need to replace basketballs. That didn't mean if I made someone think that we were buying four thousand dollars worth of basketballs, we weren't. The other thing that was questioned last week was with the swimming program. So, you see, some of these have highlighted areas, and that's where I've made adjustments for explanations from last week. The swimming program, um, we do in partnership with MKA, uh, the after-school program that is at Crescent Park School because I had Crescent Park School in the description last year, but that's the relationship. It's conducted at the Riverview Resort, and the money pays for the instructor for the six-week program in the middle of the summer. So, I contacted Nate and I asked him to give me a better description, and that's what he sent me back.
Could I ask you a question?
Yes.
Is there any room here for money for new programs that could, so that there's money available in case somebody wants to start a new program for kids in the area?
So, that's something that would need to be looked at because when you add new programs, you add new hours to the recreation director's job, and that's what happens over time. As you add jobs, you add hours to the recreation jobs and the recreation director's job, and so it may have started out as a stipend position years ago here because there were few programs and there weren't a lot of hours, and then it, as programs get added, it adds the time to the director. So, the more programs you have, the next step would be, does this job require a full-time director? So, um, I've always, um, gone with the, um, idea that the recreation director cannot add jobs, I cannot add programs that he might want to add, he or she might want to add unless there is permission because it ends up increasing the budget and increasing the hours, so.
So, if...
Yes, it can be done, but it's, it's something that needs to be, uh, talked about to see if it can be done. The next budget is Andevine Park. The only thing I had to adjust there was the twenty-five percent increase for the water. Fountain Park and Cemetery, I did not need to change anything there. Then we have the local contribution page. So, I did receive a call, um, in, and I'm guessing this happened in all of your finders, the Bethel Area Arts and Music. So, um, this was brought to my attention through Sarah. That budget, um, that packet of information was not in Sarah's binder, so I'm guessing it wasn't in any of your finders. It is listed on the spreadsheet that shows that they were asking nine hundred dollars. But in the beginning, I sent letters to all of the organizations who requested money last year, and I outlined what they had to present for information. And I did receive everyone who is listed here on your, um, spreadsheet page. It does show that they did submit their information and they were included. So, the packet you have where the blue insert is, that is the background information for the Bethel Area Arts and Music. I hope that doesn't confuse you. And there were, there were no changes made to this other than to let you know that I did include their information in your packet tonight. The next budget is the contribution to agencies. That remains the same. I did not make any changes. The next budget is the employee benefits budget. That I did have to add to it because I had to, once I got all the wages, then I had to add the, uh, the amount for the social security. So, in that line, you will see the increase in that line for the social security, um, FICA payments, and I was also able to, um, use the wages for the, um, the main course retirement account. And that's the only change to that budget. Municipal insurance, that stays the same. There were no changes made to that. Debt service, there were no changes. The next page is for the Oxford County taxes. We did have that number last week, so that stays the same, and I will, I put the current budget amount here, and I will change that Thursday after I meet with the superintendent, and that's where you'll find the attachment for the, um, patrol services. The next handout I gave you is, um, an expense summary report for the capital improvements accounts. So, when you look at that, that's a direct printout from our, um, software. It lists, uh, from account number eight hundred all the way down to eight sixty-nine, um, and that will show you the balance that's in all of those capital accounts, what we have right now. So, if you want to check any of those, some of those, some of those are, accounts are on the capital improvement, uh, budget. So if you want to check any of those, some of those, some of those accounts are on the capital improvement budget. And so if you have any questions about that. And then the next handout is the revenue summary report. So if you look at this, it will show you the amount of revenue budgeted this year, the amount that has come in, and the uncollected amount of revenue. And I'm going to take a break for one minute and go get my capital improvement printout because it's mine this one. So you can check if you have any questions. So Jess is making copies of the of the capital improvement plan, five-year plan. A few weeks back, myself, Merrill, who's the chair, Michelle, who's the vice chair, Levi, who was the chair of the budget committee, and Ted, who's the vice. Oh, were you the chair or vice chair? You were the vice chair, you still are, right? You were the first, or you stayed the same? Stayed the same. And so we all met on the five-year capital plan, and I did have to make a few changes to that. And this is what it looks like. Jess is making copies. It won't be colored because we actually are having problems with our color printer today. But we added for two thousand and twenty-five, we added two items. One is to resurface the basketball court for fifteen thousand dollars. And I think I, I think I mentioned that last week, but I'm not really sure. And then the other that we added was to replace, for office equipment placement. So in this year's budget, nine thousand dollars was budgeted in the administration account to replace computers, monitors, printers, anything like that that is needed. So when you budget something like that in the expense account and you don't replace computers that year, that money just rolls over to the general fund at the end of the fiscal year. It's better to put that money in a capital account where it rolls over into itself every year. So you don't have to keep, you don't lose it, and you can add to it. So I've added a line in the capital account adding ten thousand dollars to replace office equipment for all departments, computers, monitors, printers, copiers, et cetera. That is really the best place to have something like this because you never know if something's just going to, you know, stop working on you. So the, this past year, the current year I should say that we're in, the capital budget was one million, two hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. And that's being reduced to eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred dollars. And there were some additions that I made to the five-year capital plan that shows the cost of some of the replacements if they were made this year versus the years in the future when they actually will be replaced. Questions? Happy to answer anything.
I'm not quite sure because this is my first time. What happens next? Like where, like what else can we do today? And then where's, where do you go?
So based on my waiting for some replies back for propane options with decreasing the internet phone lines, decreasing the cost of those kind of things. And there's a few other things that I found that if I have the time, I'd like to look at those too. I'm pretty sure that a lot of these numbers can be reduced, and I think it's for a more efficient way of doing things. I do recommend that you look at going out to bid on an annual basis for all of your diesel, gas, propane, all of those. That's common to do that. Making sure that if you buy, if you have deliveries going to several departments, that you're not, you don't have separate accounts for all of them. You get to your best price if you have all of your accounts with, say, like CM Brown. We have accounts with CM Brown, but we have two accounts with them. They need to be under one account, just like suburban needed to be one, not two. They'll give you fixed costs for a year or two years depending on the company they are. With the phone lines and the internet, you want to make sure you're getting the services you need and the right services so that you're not paying the prices that you are. So those are some of the things to look at. The you know, we can look at anything in here you want. Some of these I think will change so that we can get some better pricing.
Do you have VoIP phones or just standard phones?
They are the standard phones here in the office and in the departments that have the town phones. They're not cell phones. They're landlines.
So are the town Woodstock saving anything amount going from standard phones to the voice-over IP phones?
I'm just not sure why we have accounts with First Light, with Spectrum, and because they all provide the same services, and GWI. And I do think there's some over, override on all of those.
I want to check on that because I think there was some conversation a few years ago in regards to having VoIP, particularly the other buildings being able to come into the central office. So we might want to check on that.
Well, like with the First Light, that is, they're tied to our server. But why just those two? Why not? Why isn't Public Works? I mean, how do they come in here? So I need to have a conversation with all three of these companies to find out how everything is connected.
Right, we'll run which ones.
These were all the companies that we had talked with when we were talking about doing the broadband and stuff. So that, you know, maybe that might be something to talk to them about too.
Okay.
So we've been hearing from all these people that are here about their contributions.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. I'm not aware of that, and I was told that that was not going to happen. So apparently
Did you not put it in your letter, or did one of you should have?
I never, I never put anything like that in their letter that they should attend, and we never discussed that as a board. When I sent the letter out, it was asking for all of the information from them, and then it would go in, in here. But I was actually told that you wanted to avoid having that discussion with all requesters.
In previous years, they were all told they had to be here.
Well, and I heard that today too. I was told that, when I came in, I was told that someone told them that they had to be here. One lady that I talked to asked if, she was under the understanding, if they weren't here, they wouldn't be considered. I assured her that was not the case. A couple wanted to know why people got letters, didn't get letters to come, but yet they were told they had to be here. But no letters were sent to anybody telling them that they had to be at this meeting. So I assured them that they didn't, you know, it's a public meeting, anybody could come. But I didn't send letters to anybody. Apparently, somebody did tell them that, that I
No, in previous years, they had to be here. So that's probably why everybody's sitting here.
So we have all of their information. Everyone who received the letter, who got funding last year, they sent very complete packages of information, and you have that. The only one that didn't make it in the binder was from the arts. And that's why it's in your packet tonight. It, that was just overlooked from being copied.
So what, I guess that's my question is where are we? Where do we go with that from here? Is it just like, okay, they did submit everything, and so it will be included?
It's all included, and it's on that spreadsheet.
Yeah, so I mean, there's no question that they would not.
No, they're all, they're all in the spreadsheet. It's up to the budget committee and the select board to decide if they're going to approve any or all of their requests.
Does that happen today?
Whenever, no, whenever you need to approve your final budget, which we do need one more budget meeting.
And then typically what will happen is we go through each of the departments. And then, excuse me, the, I hope the chair's okay. None of us have heard
No.
that she's
My phone right here.
That she's, anybody, any of you guys have a text from her or anything? So hopefully she's okay in the absence of the chair, the vice chair, chairs the meeting. But so what happens next, we have all the information in there, or we feel to proceed, is the chair of the budget committee and the chair of the select board. And we go through each of the pages like we just, like we just did. We have for questions again, any conversations, any information, comments. And then we go, the budget committee acts on it. They put a motion on the floor. Second, for an amount to recommend to the public to put along the town warrant. And then they, discussion, and they're done with that. And then the select board does the same thing. We put out a number for a recommendation.
In that that you see on the warrant.
The numbers that you see on the warrant.
If you have any questions at all for any of the information that we've gone over that you need more information on, you know, please let me know, and I'll get that for you.
Sharon, if, do we, does it stay in the budget so people can see the recommendations from the board and the budget? I don't remember that. We've had recommendations where the budget committee has said, no, had not be right, and the select man said, yes. Right.
If it was unanimous that neither budget or select board wants an item, then that disappears from the budget? Or does it stay with recommendations from both boards not to, not to be?
It goes in an amount. What we've done before is an amount. So for
Okay, you're right.
Yeah. So for example, Sharon gave us the general government administration. There's a budgeted amount that she has of two hundred and eighty-six thousand, one forty-four. We would have that sheet in front of us. And then the budget committee member would make a motion, and we go through that vote. And then the select board, we might, maybe we might make a different amount. Maybe we do two seventy-six, but that's how it goes by the amount.
So we can only reduce the amount? We can't reject the whole amount?
It's a zero.
The select board and the budget committee can, can make a whatever they, whatever they want. The other thing too is the warrant articles here, I'm going to read this one as an example. To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for operations for the Public Works Department in FY twenty-four. That's right from your warrant this year. And it shows, selection and budget committee recommend the seven eighty-two, five fifty-eight. It shows what the previous fiscal year amount was and what the recommended amount was because it's not in the article. So with the article written that way, the way you write it, a motion from the floor can increase or decrease that amount. The other way to do an article is to, on the warrant, is to put the amount right in the warrant article. And as an example, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of a hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine fifty-three for the recreation department. Select board recommends approval, and budget committee recommends approval. The difference in the two is that recommended budget amount is in the article. That amount cannot be increased on the floor. It can be decreased, but it cannot be increased. So that's the difference in two warrant articles. And the way the article is written now, any, someone could make a motion to rec, to increase any amount in any department by a hundred thousand dollars, which is a dangerous thing to do. Because when the budget is put together, it's based on not increasing the property tax levy limit. And because you can't increase that over a certain percentage every year, or you have to go back and do your budget over again so that you stay below that amount. And the other thing it does is you're, when you're putting your budget together, you're looking at what your mill rate is going to be. So any increase over that that's being brought can drastically increase your mill rate. So I wanted to point those two options for articles. I will tell you, I don't prefer an article the way it's here because I think it's a dangerous article. I have always, in the last twenty years, been in towns that actually put the amount right in the warrant article.
Why would you do that?
What's that?
Why would somebody do that?
I don't know. So I mean, you may have a reason why you have it, I don't know. But I'm just, I'm recommending to you what I think is the best way to do things. You may or may not agree with me, but I'm just giving you what I think is
Can you read ours again? I'm sorry.
Yes. To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for operation of Public Works Department in FY twenty-twenty-four.
But the amount is there that is proposed?
The amount is not in the article.
It's just the recommendations.
No, I'll read it again.
Okay. No, no, that part I get you. Okay, go on to the next part.
That's it.
Where it says that...
No, that's it. That's the article.
Oh, there's no figure in?
There's no amount whatsoever in the way it's written.
But then there would be the recommendations of the Select Board.
The recommendations of the Select Board in the, yes.
That they...
There isn't an amount there.
It shows the '23 amount, and it shows what the '24 amount is. And it shows that the Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend 782, which is what we proposed last year. But anyone can increase that. They could increase, they could have increased the Public Works budget by $100,000, because that amount is not in the article. If you have, if you had that dollar amount in the article, it can't go any higher than that.
So do we need to make a, do we...
How do you change it?
Budget, do we, do we need to make that recommendation? If that's how it's written, or is that from you guys?
That's the Selectment.
Is it just like an administrative change? Or is it something that has to go to a vote? A town vote?
It doesn't have to be a town vote. It would be, maybe the Select Board who sets the warrant?
Because I don't think all of ours are written that way. I think they, they just bounce the...
All money articles like that are written this way. So that's one of the changes that I, and I've already told the Select Board that I'll be making that, it's their decision. But if I have a recommendation, I will tell them the reasons why. And in some cases, there are some changes to the budget that have been done that are statutory, like some of the, where I pointed out we need warrant articles rather than being in the budget. And we'll have warrant articles for three of those that are in the Social Service budgets. Cable TV is one of them. We don't budget that. That actually is an article at town meeting, because it's written so that the amount goes to them. The way it's written now, if the amount of money that's in the, that shows up here doesn't come in, you still have to pay them whether you get that amount, amount of money in from Spectrum. And the same thing for the snowmobile registrations. There is a set amount that comes in. Snowmobile registrations go, goes back to, we get that check, we get that in January. It was like $1,079 for snowmobile registrations. That money goes to, you can vote to, to give that to a local snowmobile club. And you don't have to budget it. You just have the article for that amount, and that amount will go to them. And they also do a grant every year. That grant does not get budgeted in the budget, because it's a grant, it's an in and an out, so that would have warrant articles. So there'll be three warrant articles to cover those, so Sharon. If I confuse any of you with any, then just let me know.
So they've been done wrong, you know?
Well, I don't like to say they're wrong. I just like to say they, then...
Could be better.
Yeah, we just need to correct some, some of things.
Michelle?
Subject within our revenues, fire and ambulance protection for the Illinois Territory. It's not for this budget. Can we look at that? It's been basically flat.
So with the revenue budget...
The cost of the old one, the cost for the office?
No, we'll look at the revenue budget more next week, because I'm still working on that right now. And if you look at, I think it's on either the last page or the second to the last page in the ambulance budget. I did put that, someone asked last week, so I put it at the end of the budget. The $115,580 has come in as of today for what we bill for ambulance services. So even though you can apply that amount to the rescue budget, you, you can see that $115,000 does come in, that the rescue brings that amount of money in. And then the ambulance service fees, Mike, that's from the town, townships that you're talking about right now. That's what that money is. And also, if we look at this, like solid waste service fees, we've taken in $203,000 this year. We've taken in $7,200 in recycling fees. So it, it has all of that breakdown. The other thing too, that you're, you're going to see this year that I will tell you is, the auditors will be here Thursday and Friday. I'm waiting for them to come, because they're, I'm looking for certain figures from them as well. You'll see the audit done a little differently this year from what you've been used to seeing in the past. This is a new auditing company from you. They are one of the most qualified municipal auditing companies in the state. I've actually been working with this auditing company for 15 years. They were hired before I came here, but your auditor passed, so that's why you had to look for a new one. But right now, there's designated and undesignated monies that you have. The audit in the past, up till now, has always represented all of your funds as undesignated monies. So let's just say you look at the audit, and it shows that you have, I'll just throw numbers out, $3 million in undesignated funds. That doesn't mean that you actually don't have 300 in undesignated funds, because a lot of that money is actually designated. The audit is going to break that down now. They're coming here, when they come this week, they'll be setting up all of those, they're called special revenue funds. They're dedicated monies that cannot be used. They cannot be part of the general fund. They're only specific uses. The Bingham Fund account is one. Right now, that's currently in the general fund. We have a $46,000 cemetery account that you accepted last year, I believe at town meeting. That will also be in its own dedicated. So those monies are going to come, come out of what the total showed for undesignated funds available. So now you'll see a breakdown of monies that are dedicated and can't be used for anything other than those purposes that they came in here for. And you'll see another line that will show undesigned. The number I look for in the audit, and I'll, I get it before the audit is actually written. I want to know that undesigned amount, because that tells me what we have and how healthy we are. I would say that Bethel does have a healthy undesigned balance. Based on everything I looked at, it just needs to be broken down so that we know what we can't spend out of that amount. And those will be all listed in the audit coming up. So you'll be able to see all of that. So it will be a much more detailed audit report for you, as, as I hope your budget has been too.
The, that, figure on undesigned fund balance. That's not necessarily cash in the bank.
It is not.
Can that be broken down to tell us what cap, what is actually amount of capital as opposed to cash? Because it's kind of deceiving when you say you, your undesigned fund balance is $3 million. So you, you think, oh, I've got $3 million to spend. You don't. So in that aspect, it would be, and, and the reason I'm asking this for, when the town, at, at town meeting, when they vote to augment the budget by reducing the undesigned, if you knew what was actual cash in hand as opposed to other aspects of that makeup, it would be...
So you're talking about what's voted on at town meeting to reduce the mill rate?
Yeah.
So...
And oftentimes, what we have is, I mean, the true undesigned fund balance is only known at the time of the audit, June 30th.
Yeah, but that's not cash in the bank. That, that's a whole culmination of everything. That's just your capital and all of that other stuff. So when you put that figure out, it's deceiving.
Well, it is all cash. It, it actually is all your money.
It is all, it is all our money. It's, it's everything that's come in, and everything that should go against it. And then that's what your, lack of a better word, is your, is your profit, so to speak. And that's your cash that you have in hand. And a big point that Sharon made, which I find is going to be very helpful to us, is that there are designated revenues that weren't identified. And in theory, those designated revenues could have been in our undesigned balance, and we didn't know about it. And hence, should have been moved in our cash less. But we could probably get a pretty close number of what that, what that amount is.
I think I should have that by Friday of this week, because I usually know when they have their numbers that I want. And is it in your code that you have that warrant article on?
Yes, we do have it in the code, in the budget section, administrative budget section, that the townspeople can vote on. I forget what the term is on that amount, the hundred, $200,000 that we vote on to reduce the...
So that amount usually comes on the recommendation of the auditor. So it should not be, and I'll just say it the way I think it should be, it should not be a crapshoot for people to just make a recommendation, we're going to raise $300,000 to reduce the mill rate, or $500,000. That number needs to come from the auditor. The auditor will tell us how much we can actually use from our undesigned fund balance to reduce the mill rate. Because you don't want to have an amount recommended that you don't have. So the, the practice has been, the auditor will tell the manager that, and the manager will tell the selectman that. The selectman should then make the recommendation as to what amount should be voted on to reduce the mill rate. I haven't seen this on other town warrants, but it's in your code, so it has to be on your warrant. But that number should be, should come from the auditor, because the other amount of money, you have to make sure that in your undesigned fund balance, you keep at least three months, which is about 15, anywhere between 12 and 15% of your undesigned amount that you have. That's in the event that you have, you lose all revenue sources during the course of the year, and it will at least give you the amount of money to operate for the next three months. So then theoretically, you have to think in your head, well, okay, I have $3 million, but I need X amount, so I know I can't use that either. So the auditor will generally tell you, tell you that. So I would tell the selectman the amount that the auditor recommends up to a certain amount, and then, then they would make that recommendation. But that should be a capped article at town meeting, so that it cannot be raised at town meeting. Because if it's raised at town meeting to an amount that you don't have, then it's a problem. So that's how I would be making that recommendation.
In the past, we have kept the mill rate artificially low, then all of a sudden, the bank account was empty, and we had a huge jump in the mill rate to make up for that.
So I can tell you that won't happen.
We had an individual warn us for like five years in a row that was going to happen, and then we let it.
I'm, I'm pretty conservative in how I do these things, and... I guess that's all I can say. And again, you may not agree with me, and I, it's okay if you don't agree with me, and you tell me why. I, I won't hide anything. I think everything you see in here, I've given you backup for a lot of it. I think it's important that the Selectmen and the Budget Committee know what makes up the amount of money in these lines. And I can tell you that, as I continue to go through it, it's like, it's right there, and I know it's there, and I can explain whatever I put down. So... But I would like to have another meeting date, Mondays and Thursdays, for the best. I'd like to meet again after. I can meet with Suburban. I still will meet with Community Energy to see what they can offer, and they...
There's other people besides those two.
Yes. Well, I know that Community Energy is here. I definitely will go to Dead River, because I have seen their bid from another town, so I know that I could probably get a pretty good propane price from them. I don't know if you, they're, they don't deliver here at all, but...
I know Everett Propane does deliver, and they're a lot cheaper than...
Oh, yeah.
Many of the concepts of Community Energy.
We do have a pretty good price, though, right now, I have to tell you, from Community Energy on Arcule Oil. That's the lowest I've seen, and it's lower than what I saw in a recent bid.
Because I have Everett Propane for my loans.
Yeah, do you?
And they will be $4.69 a gallon.
It's all based on uses?
It is. It depends on how much you use. The more you use, the less you can get, so... But I'll, whatever I, we have time to do before we meet the budget finalized, to go to town meeting and everything, I will get your best prices that I can.
Everett Propane is in Bethel. They just haven't, you know, behind 26, the Andrew Wade Bennett's place, where it's all been filled up. They have plans.
And I've dealt with Everett Propane as well in the past, so...
So you can be looking at another date to meet then?
What did we look at, Jess?
Well, if you're looking at Monday and Thursdays, we have this Thursday, the 28th. Then you're coming up on, we can't do Monday, the 1st, because we have a public hearing that night. Then you're looking at the 4th or the 8th. So you're, you're looking...
So the 8th wouldn't be a good day to do it, especially, because we changed our...
Oh, the 8th we can't do, because that is the eclipse day.
And actually, we can't, can't do Thursdays either, but... If we have to move, if we have to move...
Well, you can do Tuesdays.
I can just see if we can find another place for that committee to meet.
Yeah.
So the Tuesday before, well...
The only Tuesday that might be tough is the 2nd, because that's T-ball meetings here.
Well, I don't... On the Selectmen's meeting night?
No, no.
After?
Do you want to do it after, after the 3rd? If there's any Selectmen items that need to be discussed to bring it to the committee?
Yeah.
So after April 3rd?
Yeah. Because I'm...
The 9th?
The 9th, is that a Tuesday?
Yeah.
What am I, how about that, Jess?
Yeah, that's just the ORC, so that, so if they can move...
I'll make sure, Jim.
Sure.
Okay, it's allowed.
Will that work for, for you? Tuesday, April 9th? May 5th, will that work for you? Will that work for you, Tuesday, April 9th? Yes. It's fine, okay. All right, so we'll meet again with the budget Tuesday. And I'll actually have the proposed budget recommendations for the revenue at that meeting as well.
I have a party at that time.
You do?
Let me check with my Vice Chair for that committee, and see if they can do it instead.
Just apply the company flag. There are some companies that have very good service. There are other companies that do not have any service. They are private contractors, that may be coming from Popsom, or McCannet Falls, or somewhere else. Just keep that in mind.
The other thing I'm going to be looking at too, like with propane... The other thing I'm gonna be looking at too, like with propane, some companies charge all of these fuel fees, and on one bill, that was like nineteen dollars just in fuel fees, service fees, some companies don't charge those all.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll be, I'll be looking at all that too. So, any other questions?
When do we, um, we talked about when we go through and do the vote on, if we approve which year or not, when are we gonna do that? Is that the next budget?
Yes, that would be April ninth.
Yeah, so what, what's the expectation? And I think the expectation was to do all...
To vote on the budget at that time.
Go through and vote on it, and we'll have the revenue piece?
Yes.
We'll have all our pieces, right?
And the attachment that I gave you tonight on the capital expense sheet, if you have any questions on any of that, after you get to look at it, just let me know.
And we have the updated, uh, auto-coverage use amount, I don't know.
It is, well, what we have right now is the five hundred and eighty-four thousand, five eighty-five thousand and thirty-four cents. We have that, and that was the reduction. Hopefully, they will have a new, a new amount, or something like that.
Town Harrison has their deputies, they have a dedicated deputy, and they pay two hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-six.
One deputy or more?
They just have one.
One dedicated deputy.
Is it twenty-four-sevens?
Twenty-four-seven. Well, if they've got three deputies, the Town Harrison pays for two, but it is twenty-four hour service.
So when I talked to Alicia from Dixville this afternoon, the price that they're looking at right now, they have three dedicated deputies, and they do not have coverage from twelve to six, which I asked for a new, uh, budget for. And two percent they gave her on the administrative cost, their budget is four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, but that's for three deputies. And right now, we're paying four hundred and twenty-two thousand for four dedicated deputies. However, we've only had two, because they haven't been able to provide us with the other two. They give us coverage, but they're not our dedicated deputies.
We go through this every year, there's a huge difference in coverage and patrol.
That's right.
And they're only doing three point seven calls a day, on average, and they're not on their own radar, I mean, that's...
Here's...
The town of Norway pays nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars a year for a nine-person department, a full department, so...
But Harrison has their own department, their own police board?
No.
No, Harrison is covered by...
No, they don't.
They're Cumberland County.
They're Cumberland County.
Oh, no, okay.
But I mean, it's the same, it's not like you're paying way more just because you live in Cumberland. Actually, you are paying more.
Well, you are, because they...
Definitely, what we do in Bronx County, that's...
But I think if you look at Harris, Norway, and Oxford, they're all right around nine hundred to a million, a little over a million, uh, but they have like eight and nine full-time officers.
So I mean, that's their five hundred, I mean, was it seventy-eight thousand, is over half of what Norway's paying for their entire department. And they've got nine people, a K nine, nine resources, a administrative assistant, and they're pay, they're paying, they're charging pay as higher.
It's on Norway's... Yes, oh, I know, I know.
The part, I don't, the part that I always forget, um, is the, we pay Oxford County, and, and that's, that's part of Oxford County, and then we pay for our own coverage. So it's like getting double billed.
And are we getting any sort of credit for the fact that they're not able to give us our full?
No, we talked about that with them, we asked them to look at all of, of, to look at that and several other things as well.
Do some sort of reconciliation.
Right.
So if you can't provide dedicated coverage, then hey, we get some sort of credit. To put some sort of recommendation, reconciliation piece in there, we'll get to hear back.
If you're giving us half the coverage, why would we still pay them the full?
The way they're covering it.
They're covering, it's just not that they're...
But it's not, they're paying for a dedicated deputy.
Right, right.
Because we can pay none of this, and we still have deputies, so they can say, nope, sorry, that whole, we're not paying for you.
We just pay them extra to do your job, it's kind of... I guess everyone knows how I feel about that, so...
Bless your sins.
We are, we're putting together these state statutes of what the police, what the Sheriff's Department is obligated to provide us. And I think we're gonna start to get that out there, everybody, aren't we?
Yes.
Yes. So that you'll really have something physical in your hand to know what we're getting already in a tax dollar. And is, and then we can reconcile if it's worth the effort or not individually, and, and come together as far as what we think is agreeable.
I mean, I'm speaking as a life of a police officer, and I think it's outlandish that this is happening, so...
The, the meeting on the ninth, what time is that, at five?
Five, if that works for everybody. I don't have anything else to add.
Most familiar?
I just have one, just one comment, I just wanna thank the people who are here, thank the people who are watching, um, hearing that there's apparently some confusion, um, for groups that are looking for donations from the town, that you need to be here this evening to advocate for your organization. Yes, I, I apologize, I think the rest of the word, apologize, is that there was some sort of miscommunication. We have, uh, all your, all your information, and, uh, they're definitely reading it over. So thank you for providing that, um, information, and for coming, please, please come coming, these are open, public meetings to watch.
Well, that's what I wanted to say, congratulations to all of you, thank you for what you're doing. I stayed because it was fascinating.
I'm part of the public, I love what you're doing, thank you.
All right, I wanna motion to a jury. Yes, again, all in favor?
Thank you all.